All right, I've got five o'clock. I'll call tonight's meeting in order Tuesday, February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, roll call is Howdy Goodwin, um, Mackenzie Jewett, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlo, uh, town manager Jesse Dunbar, and town clerk Katie Dandiran. And Eric has called in and said that he's on vacation.
So I'll make a motion to.
What?
Yeah, what?
Bobby's on vacation.
Excuse Eric from tonight's meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Eric from tonight's meeting. Certainly discussion. All those in favor? Um, before we get to adoption of agenda, um, Howdy has requested or, um, come up with a good idea to have a moment of silence for memory of, uh, David or Jed Campbell. He's done a lot for the town and he has, um, you know, donated a lot of his time to a lot of the boards and I think it's a good idea. Okay? All right.
I don't want you to.
Yeah, no. Um, adoption of agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to change on the agenda? Um, I have one thing that is the, um, EMR tonnage donations. Um, people would like to, um, donate their annual one ton to the Elliott family, um, that their house just burned. We will, if we want to put that on maybe as a regular business B. I don't need a motion on that, do I, Jesse?
No.
Uh, approval of minutes. We have the minutes for February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve the minutes, February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Approval of warrants. We have warrant number seventy-seven for eleven thousand, two hundred, thirty-two dollars and thirty-six cents, seventy-eight for ten thousand, six hundred, forty-nine dollars, fifty-two cents, seventy-nine for one hundred, twenty-three thousand, eight hundred, ninety-one dollars, twenty-one cents, eighty for forty-two thousand, seven hundred, twenty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents, and eighty-one for eleven thousand, one hundred, thirty-three dollars.
Make a motion to approve warrants seventy-seven through eighty-one.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve warrants seventy-seven through eighty-one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Jesse, I just got thinking, um, what are we gonna put on the agenda as well? I could adopt it. Something for while we're on the topic of Dave Jed, um, doing a memorial in the, um.
Yep.
Report.
Yep, if you want to.
You wanna do that tonight? Just, we've got a short agenda, so.
Yep.
If you guys wouldn't mind, um, we could add that in as, um, under regular business C, talking about the possibility of a, uh, memorial in the, uh, town report. All right. Now we're down to committee appointments. Kinda all ties together here. We, uh, we have the, um, Tremont Housing Authority. Uh, Jed had one of the spots on the, um, housing authority's board and we have one, um, person who is willing to take his position or fill his seat on that board.
I'll make a motion to appoint Daniel Reed to the tenant seat on the Tremont Housing Authority expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Daniel Reed to the tenant seat on the Tremont Housing Authority expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, and the Comprehensive Plan Task Force. It's now, um, we have a letter of resignation from Esther Jacobs and we have, um, one applicant, just one applicant, right, Jesse?
Uh, yeah, so Sarah White is currently serving the alternate seat.
Okay, yes, that's right.
And the thought when you created the alternate seat was that if anybody should drop off of the task force, she could be appointed as a voting member at that time. I don't think in the, as far into the process as they are, it would make sense to recruit or advertise or something.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
I make a motion to accept the resignation from Esther Jacobs and to appoint Sarah White to the at-large seat on the Comprehensive Plan Task Force expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation from Esther Jacobs and to appoint Sarah White to the at-large seat on the Comprehensive Plan Task Force expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next is financial reports.
So these reports are as of January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, which is fifty-nine percent of the way through the fiscal year. Um, in January, under revenues, we collected thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven in property taxes. Our total collections for the year are ninety-five point one-six percent of the budget remaining ahead of pace for FY twenty-two. In all the recent years, we also collected thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two in motor vehicle excise tax, resulting in total collections of sixty-four point one-eight percent of what was budgeted. This is also ahead of pace from this point last year and on pace or ahead of pace with other. Um, other notable revenue for the month included four hundred and eighty-two dollars in interest, lean interest and costs, seven hundred and eighty-one in registration agent fees, twelve hundred and thirty in checking interest, and five hundred dollars from the sale of surplus property. Under the expenses, um, the administration cost centers currently at sixty percent of the budgeted amount. In January, some notable expenses included sixteen, uh, six hundred and sixteen dollars in return fees, thirteen hundred and sixty-four dollars in maintenance, six hundred dollars for heating oil, a thousand and ninety-one for fire alarm service calls, and eight hundred and sixty-nine for repairs, including boiler repair and a pump, uh, pumping of deceptive pump tank. In public works, we're currently running at sixty-seven point oh-nine percent of the budget. Some notable expenses in January include eleven hundred and thirty-five in heating oil, twenty-two hundred and thirty-one for part-time snowfall drivers, nine hundred and twenty in cloud parks, five thousand, two hundred and thirty-six in gas and diesel, and fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty in salt and four hundred and nineteen supplies. Uh, under boards and committees, you'll see twenty-five hundred and forty-one for the ongoing work on the comprehensive plan. In the warfarin harbor, some expenses included eight hundred and fifty-two dollars in warfarin repairs, two hundred and seventy-five in ferry terminal flow repairs, seven hundred and fifty-four in annual boat maintenance, five hundred and ten for harbor master training in March, and four hundred and one in mileage. And in the general ledger, you'll see we received thirteen thousand, four hundred and seventeen in revenue sharing from the state in January, bringing the total to ninety-three thousand, four hundred and seventeen, which is sixty-nine percent of what was budgeted for the year. We also see an increase of fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-four to the warfarin fund, a reduction of eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy to the harbor fund, and an increase of two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five to the Silco fund. These are all a result of the monthly adjustments from the operating account. Otherwise, there are no significant changes to the general reserves in January.
Thank you, Jesse.
I make a motion to accept the July twenty-twenty-two through January twenty-twenty-three financial reports.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the July twenty-twenty-two through January twenty-twenty-three financial reports. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next we have regular business. We have broadband study. We have, uh, we previously contracted with, uh, Casco Bay Advisors to conduct a broadband study. And would you, Jesse, or maybe someone else would like to, and maybe Elaine would like to summarize or what, um, what the outcome was of that?
Um, yeah, so I'll give you a brief summary and then it looks like Brian.
Oh, okay, there is.
Brian has joined us on Zoom. Um, but essentially, um, the study shows, uh, the brief highlights is that eighty-one point nine percent of the homes, um, in Tremont are served by Spectrum or had service available by Spectrum. Uh, remaining eighteen point one percent appear to be largely seasonal properties. Um, there is one area towards the end of Lucas Point, um, that may have enough dwellings, um, per mile, um, that would require Spectrum to potentially fulfill their obligation and install service to those homes as part of their, um, service to the town. Um, the Tremont Broadband Committee, um, has met with Brian to have him go with a report with them and they had a meeting last week, um, to discuss recommendations to bring to you. Um, they discussed whether or not they were in favor of universal service, um, and they were. Um, were they in favor of direct, um, fiber to the home? And they were in favor of that as well. And then one of the other questions they talked about was, does the town want to own the service? And the committee did not, um, feel comfortable recommending that because they know enough about all the aspects of what that would entail. Um, so moving forward, um, I'll let Brian talk to you. Um, but moving forward, we just need the select board to advise whether they would like to explore any of the options he talks about further or what we would like to do as next steps. Um, there are, um, if we move forward with any sort of grants or proposals, part of that is, um, community engagement and we can apply for certain grants and help from the, I hope it's to, to help with. I will turn it over to Brian if he's, if he can hear us.
Okay. Well, hang on just a second. We can't hear you.
It almost sounds like it might be on the fly, a little bit.
Okay. Could you hear it over there? Yeah, it looked, it sounded like it was a very, very faint.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, we can hear you now. Perfect.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm Brian, the founder of Casco Bay Advisors. And, uh, I'm assuming everyone has a copy of the report in front of them, although I can put that up on the screen if you'd like, uh, share my screen.
We do have a copy right in front of us here.
All right, so, uh, I'll just give you a brief overview of what you are seeing in the report. Um, uh, and just running through the table of contents, we took a look at where is the consolidated communications fiber? Where is Charter Spectrum's hybrid fiber coax network? Um, and we documented all of that in the field. So we drove with every road and road driveway to identify where that infrastructure was. Um, and we brought that back, put that into the GIS system so that we can illustrate it and, and, uh, count all of the road miles and locations and so forth. So on page, um, five of the report, section two, you can see the light green, uh, color is the consolidated communications fiber, which is designed to hook up to any cell towers, large businesses, or their remote terminals to provide DSL-based internet service. Um, it's not designed to provide consumer or residential type services to the home, but it could be leveraged, um, for that type of service. Um, so we illustrate that, uh, just so that you can see what you have in town from the consolidated. Moving on to page seven is a map of the Spectrum Hybrid Fiber Coax Network. Uh, so everything in blue are areas that are served by Spectrum and the green areas are the areas that do not have any cable TV infrastructure. So, um, and that's important. We'll get on, uh, to, uh, a little later in the report, but this allows you to, to see where the infrastructure is and who there may not be served by that infrastructure. When we look at the uncabled areas on page eight, um, we sort of blew that up a little bit and included the locations so that you can see a little more detail of those areas that are unserved and can only get consolidated DSL service today. And for most towns, those are the areas that folks wanna focus on first to make sure that everyone in town has access to the same type of service. Um, as Jesse was, uh, speaking to earlier, um, you do have a franchise agreement with Charter Spectrum and, uh, by state law, they are required to build their network to areas that, um, extend from their existing network where there's at least fifteen homes per mile. So the area around Point Road appears to be an area that they may be obligated to serve. Um, every time we bring one of these to the attention of the cable company, there's a lot of back and forth as to whether or not that really is an area that meets their standards. But it is worth bringing to their attention to see, um, their view and, um, uh, see if they can serve. Uh, the, the state law says it's from the end of their existing network. If there's fifteen homes a mile, they have to build it out for free. Their interpretation of that law is that if it's, uh, it's from the distance from their nearest fiber optic node, which always adds additional mileage and makes that calculation, um, uh, not work out. There is a bill at the legislature this year to reinforce and clarify that statute so that, uh, Spectrum is, uh, obligated to build out those areas, uh, a little bit more clearly. So, but again, it's an area that's worth bringing to their attention. And then on, on page ten, this is really the meat of the report in one single table. Um, and based on all of that field survey and the GIS work, we're able to extract all of the data that allows us to project what would the cost be to build a fiber-to-the-home network? Either owned by the town or owned by phone company or somebody else, but it gives you a sense for what the cost would be. So as you look through this, um, Spectrum covers thirty-eight point eight miles of the required network and there is eight point six miles of what we call uncabled. So there's no cable infrastructure. That's the unserved area for a total of forty-seven point four miles. Um, that's important as we get down to talk about the costs. As far as potential subscriber locations, we've identified twelve hundred and ninety-seven. The way that we identify those is using nine-one-one data and then also, uh, examining aerial imagery to identify those locations that may not have a nine-one-one address assigned. So in total, we're just shy of thirteen hundred locations or twenty-seven subscribers per mile. Um, that's a metric that a lot of service providers look at to see, is this an area that they would be interested in serving, uh, or overbuilding, uh, the cable company? So that's a key metric. And then we, we estimate the number of utility poles based on the mileage and based on our past experience, we're assuming that the cost to make a utility pole ready for a new attachment, um, on average would be about four hundred dollars. Um, so that totals just shy of six hundred thousand dollars to make the poles ready for a new attachment before you would begin construction. And in, on the following page, I delve into the utility pole make-ready process so that you can understand it. Uh, you can read that at your leisure. Um, but it is quite a complex and time-consuming process. And then we look at the construction cost per mile right now. That's averaging around thirty thousand, uh, per mile and fourteen hundred dollars per hour in location. Um, but we don't assume that you would serve every location. If, uh, if somebody was gonna come in and build a fiber-to-the-home network, they wouldn't get a hundred percent market share. And typically, when you're competing with the cable company, forty percent is a realistic market share, uh, numbers. That's what we use there. So forty percent of the twelve hundred and ninety-seven locations times fourteen hundred dollars plus the thirty thousand per mile times the forty-seven point four miles gives you a total construction cost of a little bit greater than two point one million. Um, we've added in a contingency of, uh, two hundred and seventy-three thousand or ten percent of the construction and the make-ready for a total project cost of three million. So if the town wanted to build its own network or if a new provider wanted to come in and build a network, their cost would be roughly three million dollars. And these estimates have proven out to be very accurate. So they're within five to ten percent accuracy here, um, as far as what the actual cost would be. If the provider didn't need to perform any utility pole make-ready, such as the phone company, CCI, they're already on the telephone poles. They don't need to do any make-ready. And the, uh, cable company is on eighty-two percent of the poles. So they don't have a lot of make-ready to do. Then you're looking at a cost of about two point four million for those providers to, um, roll out fiber-to-the-home service. So, um, the incumbent phone company and the cable company are always the lowest cost solution for that reason. Um, but there may be other providers that are interested. Once they see the data in this report, they may be affected out to the item as well. Um, so I just talked about the, uh, the make-ready process. Um, I described in here the rest of these cost inputs, the construction, the engineering, project management, and so forth, um, that you can delve into. Um, but then we move on to one of the strategies. And really, the strategies are is to partner with someone. Uh, uh, some towns will decide they wanna own their own network, but they partner with another provider to build and operate that network. Uh, many other towns decide, we don't wanna own the network, but we do want to work with a provider to roll out high-speed internet over fiber. Um, so, um, the strategies would be to try to work something out with Spectrum or Consolidated Communications, but also share this report with all of the other providers that are operating in the state of Maine to see if they have any interest as well. So it's really socializing this data with the providers. Um, they're very accustomed to receiving this type of data and, um, it's in a format that they can easily input into their investment models to determine, is this something of interest or not? Uh, so our recommendations are, you know, number one, if you keep doing this through the process, is revisit your, your goals and your vision, what you want. Um, it sounds like the broadband committee did that at the last meeting, decided that they wanted to certainly be able to partner with someone, but not necessarily own their own asset. That may change as you go through the process, but that's fine. Um, uh, enter into those negotiations with whichever, uh, internet providers may be interested in providing service and then secure some additional funding to have someone help you through that process. Whether that's myself as Casco Bay Advisors or some other consultant, you really want to make sure that you have that experience and expertise on your side of the table as you're sitting down talking with these other providers. So that's, uh, the remainder of the report is really educational. It's definitions. It talks about the different technologies. If you're interested, I'm not gonna go through that right now, but certainly happy to answer any questions. Uh, so it's more background information to, um, make sure that everyone understands the different op, options to provide service or what type of, of, uh, technology do they have to have. Um, I will say that, uh, the town of Mount Desert has gone through this process. We've helped facilitate with service providers. Um, Charter Spectrum has put a proposal on the table that they're in the process of refining to build their network out to the remainder of the town. Um, Consolidated Communications, uh, by the end of this month is gonna have a proposal ready to build fiber to all of Mount Desert, the town of Mount Desert. Um, and we are just finishing up an identical study for Bar Harbor and they'll be moving into that facilitation phase as well. So on the island, three of the four towns have gone through this process and are poised to, um, enter into those, uh, discussions with, uh, service providers. So I'm gonna stop there and see if there's any questions that I can answer.
Okay, thank you.
Spectrum's not proposing fiber to the homes, is it? Are they?
Well, um, their, their strategy is continuing to evolve and, um, most historically, they've extended their fi, hybrid fiber coax, but more and more, and, uh, they're looking at installing just fiber. And in some cases, even those small little areas, they're building fiber instead of coax. Um, so, um, you know, a- again, that, that's evolving. That's one of the things that they're, when I said they're, they're refining their proposal for Mount Desert, uh, it appears that they're looking at maybe just going fiber and not coax there, um, into those unserved areas. That doesn't mean they're gonna overbuild their, their entire existing network with fiber, but, uh, for those gap areas. So technology is changing and, um, I fully expect within, say, five years, um, they'll upgrade their networks, not to all fiber, but through the cable modems and their central office equipment, be able to offer faster and faster speeds. Uh, a coax network is never gonna be as reliable as a fiber network. Um, but, you know, they, they continue to tweak things to improve the service, so.
The, uh, the number of customers per mile, I'm guessing twenty-sevens on the lower side of what looks appealing to most of them.
Um, yeah, yeah, it, I, ideally, somebody like, uh, Consolidated Communications or, uh, there's another company called Gun Net Speed, they're looking for fifty homes a mile, um, without subsidy. But if there's a subsidy available, they'll look at something lower. Twenty-seven homes a mile isn't bad in comparison to many, many areas of need. Um, you know, we do a lot of work in Franklin, Somerset, De Scaticus County. Um, and you have areas there that have, uh, twelve, ten. Um, and you have areas there that have uh, twelve, ten, eight homes a mile. Um, uh, and those are eligible for um, state and federal grants, which then make it more attractive for the provider. So for instance, uh, Jackman, um, Moose River, Rockwood, Tom Heagan, all the way down to Greenville, um, it's all fiber to the home because there were subsidies available to build that out. Um, we know that Consolidated is going to build fiber in Bar Harbor. We just don't know if it's gonna be all of Bar Harbor or not. Um, so we're expecting them to come back and ask for a subsidy. Um, so it, it, it varies. And all of the providers, their investment strategies seem to change quarter to quarter if they're a publicly traded company and the private companies are, you know, working with private equity. And so the, their strategies are constantly evolving as to what they're willing to do.
If we end up kinda with the same thought process as Bar Harbor or Mount Desert, do you think it will, I don't know, help encourage someone or approve a bargaining position? We can consult, you know, if we can work together?
Yeah, um, there's, there's pros and cons to that. First of all, for uh, Tremont, there's not a lot of synergy with your neighbors. There's one road that comes out of Mount Desert into Tremont. Um, so from a networking standpoint, there's not a lot of synergy. On the other hand, for Mount Desert, there's five interconnections with Bar Harbor. Um, so there, there's a little bit more synergy. Um, we always recommend if you can create more scale, then that gains more interest from the providers, uh, in the negotiating process. On the flip side, try getting three towns to agree on the same strategy and the same uh, funding mechanism and the same timeline. Uh, if you can accomplish that, then, you know, you're golden. Um, so that's the, you know, that's the con. But, you know, the providers do like looking at um, a, a wider scale.
I will say the committee's been working with town of Mount Desert and they're open to working with us in bringing a provider in and doing fiber to the home. Um, so we're on the same page with them. We haven't talked timeline, I don't think, but uh, or subsidy, but we've talked collaboration.
Any other questions from anybody else?
Um, can you just clarify, um, I didn't see it in the definition forum. But when you say served, that's the, it's available, not necessarily connected to it?
Yeah, that's a, a great uh, observation or, or question and I probably, I should have highlighted that. From Charter Spectrum's perspective, those locations are serviceable. In other words, their infrastructure passes that have property. And they'll hook them up if you're within, say, two or, or two hundred or two hundred and fifty feet of the road. But if your home is a thousand feet away, there's gonna be an extra cost to the homeowner to help subsidize the construction of that connection from the road to the home. They still consider it serviceable. You know, our mapping mirrors how they consider it. Um, but that doesn't mean that uh, everyone is easily served. There may be additional costs. Um, so um, and that's the same with the power company and with the phone company. Um, everyone has a standard. If, if you're building a new home, a thousand-foot driveway, you're gonna pay extra for electric service to get down to your home. Um, so it's not an uncommon practice. And with the, the coax network, they can only go so far on a drop cable, the cable that comes into your house. If it's beyond, say, two hundred or two hundred and fifty feet, they need to build a higher-capacity cable at greater expense to get closer to your house before they convert to the drop cable. So technically, there's some reasoning behind that. If you have a, a hundred percent fiber network, those distances become less important. Um, because the fiber doesn't care how long it is, the light will still travel down it. So um, technology does make a difference in that equation.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone? Okay, I think you have answered everyone's questions. Thank you very much.
Well, let me know if I can assist with the next steps and uh, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
So if I could add to that, um, again, when they are calling it served, it doesn't mean that everybody has internet access now. It just means that they could. So I think if what the number was, uh, that eighty-one percent of the homes in Tremont are served, doesn't mean that they have it.
Yeah.
Um, the committee is also looking at um, other factors. Where some of their considerations, of course, are inter- uh, technology is increasing whether you're repairing boats where they have to download software to run whatever fix they have to do on that. Or whether it's a business, a stay-at-home business. Or um, the other thing is there's a lot of rentals now, which is kind of a, a big business source besides fishing in, in this community. And a lot of visitors, um, come to the area to vacation, but they're also working at the same time. And you were, I mean, I think, but Northeast Harbor, or maybe it was yourself. Um, in Northeast Harbor, um, they had um, a real, a Realtor there that said that that is the number one question that they get asked. So it ranks very, very high. So for people who are running businesses, whether it's campgrounds or, or rentals, that's one of the biggest things that, um, people who wanna lease them are looking for. Not only that, but um, the planning committee, is that that committee? Did I say that? Has all the maps on the table?
The conflict, yep.
Um, they reported that, um, I don't know what I was going to say. Oh, they were reporting that Bass Harbor is um, an area where most people travel away to get work. Um, and we're always looking to keep our kids here to continue living in this area in the future. One way, and who knows what it says, is one way would be to increase, make sure that they have good enough internet service in order to work away and work here, stay here and, and still have a job someplace else. So not that any one of those are the primary values, but we're considering all of those. And a couple of years ago when COVID started, um, this school had to um, provide internet access to about, I, I'm thinking if I can remember right, and you know, I'm getting older, right? It's about eighteen percent of the population had to be helped with providing internet service so that those kids could, those kids and teachers that lived in our community could get internet access during that time. So when you're thinking about it that way, you know, there's a lot of people here who aren't. The other side of that coin is even if people could get internet access, we're also thinking about could they afford it? And you know, what, what could be done to help um, low-income be able to afford it? Um, because if they can't afford it, it's of no value, right? So we're looking at all of those things. And um, when we recommended that, um, it'd be fiber to the home, the thought was, um, might as well, at this point, technology is changing so fast that if you continue to go with coax, you're gonna be behind the times anyway. And in a couple of years, it's gonna be fiber anyway. That's gonna be the, the way it is. All the companies are planning on going fiber right now. For most of them anyway. We've got a plan for fiber to the home now because by the time we're done doing this whole thing, it's gonna be two years from the line anyway, right? Um, and like I say, uh, there would be, uh, we're looking also, we're hoping to look into grants if you guys approve it and, and look at other funding sources to help pay for this, um, because it is expensive, right? Um, what was the second decision that we made, fiber to the home and?
Universal Service.
Oh, Universal Service. Um, it was only, that's about the low-income and all that kinda stuff. We really wanted everybody, if we're gonna spread anybody doing it, we might as well make it fair and equitable to everybody in, in the community. And that's if, um, more homes are built, we want them to be included in this plan too, which is still, you know, like, um, Spectrum right now, they have no obligation to fill the needs of somebody who's building a home, you know, that doesn't already follow into their area of service. So we wanted to make sure that we go ahead and um, provide service. We would provide it to everybody in the community, not just a some. That's where we were going. So we were sort of wondering, and, and uh, we're partnering, of course, with the main connection authority.
Connectivity Authority.
The main connectivity authority. So we're partnering with them and they offer various monies to help.
It's the Island Institute. And we. So the main connectivity authority provided funding to the Island Institute to focus on broadband and um, equal access to our NBI. And uh, so they have planning grants available to help with the community engagement aspect. So those grants, they, they can help cover staff time from the town, uh, materials, printed materials, mailing materials, so we can kinda gather some, um, surveys and information about who would be interested in this. So that way we can make sure that we have enough people in the town that know about it and would be interested in participating. And then we would work with either Consolidated, um, or Spectrum to look for state grants for the subsidization.
The other thing that Island Institute can do is, uh, if we need professional, uh, help, like Casco Bay, they also have funds that would pay for specific Casco Bay, um, expertise that they might not be able to provide. Right, yes, I did hear that from Michelle Day-Lin.
Michelle, yes.
Okay, so, so that is true.
But we like working with Casco Bay. They know what they're talking about.
Yeah. And, and the other thing is, like you said, uh, the town doesn't have enough information to be able to negotiate with these companies in order to get the best deal or even know what they're talking about for the most part. So we have to um, um, have that kind of expertise on our side if they're going to negotiate. Island Institute can do some of it. Um, in or we may, um, go with someone like Casco Bay to, to do the more professional stuff. The other thing is like, uh, companies like Consolidated, um, and Verizon, each of those people, um, when, I, I can't really say exactly, but I do know that when they get a, um, they, they go to the state for financial aid in order to build up the community. And um, we were told, um, that should Tremont or Bass Harbor, um, be interested, or Tremont, be interested in going down that road. We can always put our name in. To the next time that they apply to the state for a grant, we may, it wouldn't hurt, you know, we may be put into that agglomeration of towns to get funding. So they would pay, um, a higher percentage of building up that community than, so we wouldn't have to pay the whole thing. So that's a possible, um, way of getting funded as well. But we don't know where we would fall at this point. So we would have to first, you know, the community engagement, um, to see how the townspeople feel about it. And after that, we'd have to research, um, financial, um, meetings from every place possible before we move forward.
I'd have to agree with your assessment, if you're gonna build out, build fiber. Um, it's, it's future-proofing it. I mean, the capacity of fibers, levels of magnitude, more than any other metallic conductor. And it only makes sense as having a broadband and internet connection or whatever to your house is getting to be more and more critical and more and more is going over it. So I, I think if we're gonna invest, it should be a fiber network.
Believe it in our committee meetings we, we zooms. And one of our members freezes all the time.
Yeah.
And they're pretty much, they're not the boonies. I'll tell you that, they're not the boonies and they freeze all the time. So, you know, if you're not on the spectrum watching your TV and you're trying to get like Netflix or whatever else, if you're doing it over, over, um, cable, you know, we constantly get kicked out of something, you know, that we have to start over again. So it does impact the regular guy, you know, just like anybody else. But it, it also impacts a lot more of our community than we think.
And track me if I'm wrong, but this is, the project cost is estimated three million dollars.
If they were to build out to every, um, area, like for instance, the forty percent, yeah. So Mount Desert, um, you know, critical and reckless, this is a better. Mount Desert had about fifty-five homes where we have about ninety-five homes, um, that were not connected. And the end cost for them, so you know, that three million is one and a half million, right? And after grants and all this other kinda stuff. And getting Spectrum to go and push them to do the houses that they were supposed to do. Uh, that lowered the numbers from the forty-five down to something else. And so by the time that they got the rest of the grants, I think quotes are, um, about a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred eighty thousand dollars. Uh, one of those areas that they, um, would be responsible for now. I'm joking, hoping on any of that, those numbers exactly.
Yeah, just ballpark, yeah.
That's about where it is. And so, um, if we have double that, um, so it'd be like four hundred thousand dollars. That's what I'm sort of thinking for around here. Um, none of that is proven and we'd have to definitely get quotes from them. So that's what we're looking at, seeing if you guys, uh, want us to continue to, um, you know, harvest information from the community to see how they feel. Um, and some of that is, you know, you have intent to invest in version, all that kinda stuff, right? There's already questions that have been built out by other communities to really refine the questions. Um, and then the other thing is, you know, are you interested in getting grants? Or, or having these people, um, contact Spectrum to make sure that they fulfill contracts with the town in Tremont? And to see if they would give us quotes on the stuff that we need to build out the entire community. I mean, it's not a commitment to build or anything, it's just getting information. Cause right now I feel like we don't have enough information to really make a decision. But we wanna know if you guys are interested in moving in that direction.
No, me and myself, I think, I mean, I think it all sounds great. Um, I, I would prefer to focus on making sure that people, um, to start with, have internet. You know, have a chance of getting internet. And I know, I'm completely numb to this stuff. So it's cable, I think Spectrum's great. I think it works great. I know fiber's probably, you know, night and day difference. But to me, that's, that's, you know, great. Um, I would just like to see the, the town, I don't know how they can, but to help people that maybe don't qualify for it or areas that they, the Spectrum doesn't wanna extend their line to. Um, you know, maybe help financially somehow get them to, to extend, you know, so people have at least basic service to start out with, um, before upgrading to, cause it sounds like, from what he's saying, and, and like. um before upgrading to, because it sounds like from what he's saying, in, in like five years or so, you know, I think they're gonna slowly start upgrading the system anyhow, um, is more or less what I get from it.
I was kind of looking at the math and it'd be interesting to see what it would cost to hit these areas for them to extend the COAX network to these areas and compare it to what it would cost to do this. Because the, the way I'm looking at the pricing, if you get one of the two utilities who's currently on the poles, Consolidated Communications and Spectrum, the make-work, the make-ready work is pretty much done. So you've just knocked the cost of upgrading the whole network down to two point four million. They're gonna eat a certain amount of that cost. I mean, that's the cost of doing business. Say you get them to agree to do it for fifty percent, you're looking at, you know, one point two million dollars then. With some grant funding and all that, it might not be that bad. And by the time you do that compared to what is, looking at what it would cost to extend the network to the small, you know, the percentage of areas that aren't served, it may look like a pretty good deal to upgrade the whole network. And I mean, I'd love to see those numbers, you know, something like that. I know there's federal money, which I think maybe the state's administering. I think it was given as a ball grant to the state and they're administering a lot of these broadband grants. But I think there's a lot of money out there to build networks out right now. So it'd be really interesting to see, interested to see, first of all, if you could talk the cable company to extending, you know, COAX to these people without the town kicking in a lot of money. And again, you know, if it's gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars more to build out the whole town rather than go to a few places, to me, that would be real money well spent. You know, so it'd be really interesting to see some real numbers instead of guessing.
Cause I know I ran in the same issue, my driveway's like twenty-five hundred feet long and they would not bring it up in there. Um, but I, they, they were willing to work with me on the initial price was like, you know, that's not gonna happen. And then it, um, but they were, they, they came back with a, you know, a somewhat reasonable amount, what I felt like was. Um, and that's what I feel like if, if you get some of these people, maybe they're on the outer edges of it, if the town could somehow, you know, assist or grant money or whatever. But no, I'd love to see more, um, more information on it, that's for sure. And see what you can find for grants and see what, you know, what, cause if you can find a grant for okay, that sounds good.
We like grants.
We like grants. We don't have to keep watching the taxes go up and up and that sounds good.
We like free money.
Yeah, I know. But I think it's a good idea too to get out to, um, I don't know how you would reach some of these people also that don't, you know, have no service right now, whether they would want to get service. You know, some of the people that are on, um, whether they're seasonal residents, maybe they prefer not to have, you know, maybe they don't want that. And it'd be nice to see what's, you know, what, what they would do, um, if they were offered it.
Is there a way to track, you know, who does and doesn't have it without crossing some boundary?
I know.
Uh, you can probably just really mention that, um, other than doing surveys.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a survey, that's what I would think, like a survey.
Um, Mondo Zerit did two or three surveys.
Yeah.
Um, refining questions as they went along, so we'd probably start with the refined questions.
Yeah.
And then see where we go, our, our populations are somewhat different, but not really all that much.
I would guess they might have less people per mile in the town by the time you get up to Pretty Marsh and all that. Mondo Zerit's pretty spread out.
But that's what we're thinking of doing is, is, you know, you can't exactly send a survey via the internet.
You could all mail.
Send out a mail, yeah.
And that's what the Island Institute is able to help us with and, you know, they support it financially as well, so. So that's what we'll do then.
I think it's great. I think, thanks for all your hard work and, um, yeah, if you can, yeah.
Do you want it to?
I, I have internet.
You couldn't get it for a long time and I've seen the worst of it, hu- well, satellite internet was by far the worst I've ever seen. And there are some areas of town that, that had that for quite some time and that was like, well, I think I might use it sometime today.
Well, you know, the other thing to consider, and I know that I respect the comment that you made, that, you know, um, it collapses great for you and you're happy with it and all that kind of stuff. However, you know, that's not your living. You know, and you do it when you get home or, you know, doing something like that. But even I, who work at the school and, um, you know, during COVID and all that, I was like online all the time. And uh, even, you know, where I live, um, even that has helped some to keep it up and running all the time. And even with town committee meetings, uh, we had difficulties uh with it. I'd just like something that's reliable. I mean, if you're gonna do work, uh, conversations with a solar um developer in Northeast Harbor wanted to, cause he has a house in Northeast Harbor, wanted to run his business in Northeast Harbor, but couldn't cause service was too bad. So he had to stay in Boston to run his business. And so that makes a big, a, a big difference when you're talking about keeping people here and enjoying our, our community and having our kids and be able to work with them.
And I'm sure once I used it for two days, I'd be like, oh, I'm never using that again. Like I said, it's just not my thing.
But your kids.
Oh, yes, exactly.
Problem is it changes fast and you keep putting more and more demand on it. I mean, we were all pretty happy with dial-up not that many years ago.
Yeah, I know.
But in the summertime, you know, when everybody's here, you know, it's like, you can't get on.
Cell phone, yeah, cell phone networks.
Yeah, and they'll piggyback on that, on the fiber network.
So anyway, that's what we'll do is we'll investigate and we'll proceed along with the survey and we'll proceed with funding grants and getting quotes and, um, basically everything that Brian suggested that we do. And we were asking the town to go ahead, I don't know if we go through the Jesse or Jesse goes through someone like Brian to, um, talk about having, um, Spectrum meet their obligation.
Yeah.
So that would be Brian.
Yep. So we would hire, hire them again to do that. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Someone who does that stuff every day knows the ins and outs, that's who you wanna go to bat for you.
And we might be able to use funding from, we might be able to get some funding for that to the institute's main connectivity authority. Don't know, not guaranteeing that, but we'll always try to find funding for this stuff. We're not gonna try to just think of the town as being the first place of funding, we'll let you know later that's often.
Thank you, and thank you guys for all your hard work. Jesse, do you need anything from us?
I don't think.
No question. No, I didn't think, but. All right, um, moving on under regular business, um, to B, which is, we added on is EMR donations. I'll just give a quick summary, but um Lee Worcester of EMR has had several Tremont residents call and ask if they could donate their annual tonnage um to the Elliott family um to help with their cleanup after their house burned. And obviously I have no issue with that at all.
No, no, if everyone knows what it is, or at least in the audience. Okay, every residence in town gets a ton of debris go there included in their tax bill, so just.
Yep. Yeah, so the town pays for up to a ton per resident each year. So Lee reached out to me asking if that was okay with the town to allow the transfer of tonnage to the Elliott family.
It's great.
Yeah, it's a great idea too.
Happy people do it.
Make a motion to have the town manager authorize EMR to allow residents to donate from their annual two thousand pound accounts to the Elliott family.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to have the town manager authorize EMR to allow residents to donate from their annual two thousand pound accounts to the Elliott family. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Um, is there also anything the town could do to help assist with their, you know? Um, have they found a spot to stay for now in?
I, yep, I made a couple of calls last week and I know they had at least this whole week, um, somewhere.
Okay, good. Yep.
And she said that it could be extended, um, if needed, so if I find that out, I'll call back.
Okay. Yep.
I think they're going to camp up it soon as.
A camper?
A camper for now after the places they're staying.
Yeah.
Temporarily until they can.
Yeah, and they can, I mean, they can apply to general systems.
Okay. All right, um, now we go on to C, which is, um, we talked about putting a, a possibility of putting in not just a dedication. Um, we've already chosen that for this year's, um, report, but also, um, a memorial, you know, memorial of, uh, for Dave, um, Jim Campbell.
Yep.
Sound good?
We haven't missed your, Dr. Van Der Mader. No, we have not.
Think he's done a lot for, you know, the town and he's been president all important, so he comes to do something.
Yep.
Yep.
Do you need a motion for that?
Um, yeah, if you want.
Yeah, I make a motion to put a memorial in the annual town report for Dave Campbell.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to put a memorial in the, um, annual town report in, um, memoriam of Dave Campbell. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next we have the town manager's report.
All right, so in the last two weeks, some projects of interest. I've been working on the continued work on the FY twenty-four budget. Um, finished the workers' comp audit. I had a meeting with Mel Mussum of the Mussum Group, um, affiliate attending your meeting on March sixth to discuss, um, the short-term rental discussion moving forward to the planning work. I had a meeting with, um, the alarm company for the town office. And then we had a water flood issue, um, a valve, uh, or a hose let go on the water filter system in the boiler room during the night, um, flooded into this room at the boiler room. So Katie and I were busy cleaning that up. Um, I did file a claim to the insurance company. Uh, the inspector, um, adjuster was out last week and there is, um, somewhat significant water damage in the walls of the bathroom, of the kitchen area back there and the boiler room. So we'll be getting estimates on repairing that. Um, we conducted harbor master interviews, I attended a main municipal, um, training, attended the broadband committee meeting and some follow-up from that. Meeting prep, financial reports, harbor committee financial reports. I attended the MRC executive session about the plan and him. Had a meeting with the Climate Thrive to follow up on the, um, grant that we received in November and did some general systems work. The clerk was busy with VNB reports, working on the town report, working on the clerk's annual report letter, assisting with the water issue up here at the town office, posting public hearing notices and documented vote notices. Public works, um, did maintenance on equipment, uh, housekeeping, started repairs on truck nine Sander, changed oil and air on the John Deere, washed equipment, cleaned floats and ramps off at the dock, treated roads, replaced lights on truck three Sander, cleaned up the sand shed, repaired the John Deere bucket, put a snow guard on truck three's plow, cleaned and greased trucks one and two, changed wing steel on trucks one and two, a Sander repair on truck three, greased the Sanders on three and nine and the Bobcat and lent a Bangler truck to get new steel and cutting edges for trucks three and nine. And over the next couple of weeks, I'll continue finalizing the FY twenty-four budget and hopefully finalizing the Harbor Master hiring.
Thank you, Jesse.
Was there any good news out of the MRC meeting?
No.
No. He was quick with that.
No, 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 no.
Big surprise, I was hoping you were gonna say yes.
You didn't even have to think about it, Kevin.
No, I don't know.
It wasn't no hesitation at all.
All right, suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three at five PM at the town office.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three, five PM at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? And don't forget, March, that's everything we.
March Madness.
Yeah, it is March. It's a good time to go on vacation, Katie's always.
We'll get a sale with some Florida, excuse to go down, they might do it. On the road for sale.
From the hurricane and stuff.